So, I just want to repeat a little bit of what I said at the beginning, so these candidates will know what the rules are that they agreed to. They have agreed to a format and ground rules for tonight’s forum. The candidates will have 60 seconds, one minute, to respond to questions. A timer seated at the front of the room will give candidates visual signs, signals, to help them pace their responses. We have allowed time for rebuttals. Each candidate is allowed two 30-second rebuttals. You have been given two rebuttal cards to indicate to the moderator that you wish to rebut a statement by your opponent. This is for rebuttal only, not a new statement. Okay? And we’re going to start with question number one with Josh Grossman. What do you bring to the City Council that Sunnyvale needs but doesn’t have?
Well, I think what I bring to the Sunnyvale City Council that it needs and doesn’t have right now is complete independence. I have only individual contributions to my campaign. I have only individual contributions to my campaign. I’ve taken no money from PACs, developers, or corporations. And I think that’s something that’s going to set me apart. In addition, I’m a tech executive, as well as an attorney member of the bar, and I’m paid to have good judgment. And I think that judgment I’ll bring, plus my past experience as a school board president and the chair of our Housing and Human Services Commission, makes me uniquely suited for this position, and I’m excited to join the council if that should occur.
Thank you. Mr. Hendrix.
So, the experience I bring is I have 30-plus years of tech, high-tech management experience. I have three and a half years I’ve been on, was on the city’s planning commission before I became on the council. I have four and a half years of being on the city council and dealing with issues that come up. And I have two and a half years’ experience as being the mayor of the city of Sunnyvale and dealing with the complex issues and the nuanced answers that need to be crafted to go ahead and keep Sunnyvale running smoothly.
Thank you. Let’s start this question with Mr. Hendrix. What is the most important priority for Sunnyvale City Council to work on in the coming year, and why?
So, the most important thing that I always start with, talk about in the city council, is the city’s budget. The city budget is the key factor that drives anything that we’re going to be able to be done. It’s what lets us have good core services in the city of Sunnyvale, high-quality public safety, our parks, libraries, being able to keep our roads in shape, trees trimmed, sidewalks maintained. Once we do those things, and we’re only able to do that when we have a solid budget, then we can go ahead and we can look at other things, like we’ve been able to go off and do with the Silicon Valley Clean Energy and other type of social issues, and be able to look at things we can do to try and address lower-income housing and things like that. But it all starts with having good, solid finances in the city of Sunnyvale. And the city of Sunnyvale has a good balanced budget, but it’s fragile due to things that are going on in the economy.
Thank you. Mr. Grossman?
Well, I would narrow that down and say it’s less than a year. It’s, the clock is running, so we’ve got less than 40 days. We’ve received a letter from a powerhouse law firm asking us to move to district elections, and it appears that we’re not doing anything in terms of trying to negotiate with them. And I think there’s kind of a fundamental misunderstanding about what we need to do. We need to work, whether you like district elections or not, we need to have a strategy that’s going to limit our liability to $30,000, not end up with a $4.5 million judgment like the city of Palmdale. And we need to do that very quickly because the clock is ticking. So that’s what I would address immediately, because it’s the most pressing issue currently.
Thank you.
So, I have this little card.
Oh, thank you.
So, I would just go ahead and respond that the city of Sunnyvale is negotiating with the lawyer firm that has sent us a letter about the CVRA. It is not something that is going to be done in public with what’s going on. I can assure the public that the city of Sunnyvale is actively working on this and working to go ahead and get to an appropriate solution that will be done according to the charter of the city of Sunnyvale and not just a random decision by the city council.
And a rebuttal over there. Thirty seconds.
I would just say, I would like the mayor to then commit to limit our liability to $30,000 and act to move within the 40-day, 45-day grace period. If we don’t do that, that ship has sailed, and we’re going to be stuck with a very costly, expensive lawsuit which we will lose. No jurisdiction has triumphed in one of these lawsuits.
Thank you. Now, moving on, and I’m, I think it’s Mr. Grossman going to be first this time. In Sunnyvale, the median rent is $3,000, and the median home price is 1.9 million. What strategies would you champion to help make Sunnyvale a more affordable place to live?
Well, first of all, we’ve got to sort of start with the low-hanging fruit, if you will. I don’t love that phrase, but I’m going to use it. We’ve got to protect our stock of affordable housing that exists now, and that means our mobile home parks. So, we need to very quickly take the 400 acres of mobile home park that exists and have a ballot initiative for the folks to vote on that preserves that in perpetuity, as well as getting mobile home park rent stabilization on the ballot. That’s critical. We need to let the people decide. That’s something we need to do immediately to preserve that area. Another thing we need to do is increase our 12.5% affordable housing fee. That’s an in lieu of fee, and we have numerous examples of places like Butcher’s Corner where you have a development with zero units of affordable housing. And instead of affordable housing, you have that money going to a pool of money that sometimes we’re not able to spend. So, those are two things I think are quite important.
Mr. Hendrix.
So, what the city is doing is we’re going ahead and we are zoning more areas of the city for housing. What we need to do is allow for more zoning of housing so that we can have more housing stock be built in the city of Sunnyvale. Mr. Grossman mentions the 400 acres of mobile home parks. Those are already preserved, that they are going to be staying as 400 acres. The city is required to have 400 acres preserved. We need to build more housing near transit so that people have an opportunity to be able to use transit as opposed to single occupancy cars. And we’re also going to be changing right now. We require 12.5% of housing in developments to go to affordable housing, and I believe that the city of Sunnyvale is going to change and move to the 15% for that very shortly.
Thank you. Am I finding my place here? Okay. Mr., we’re going to start with Mr. Hendrix. State Proposition 10 provides for cities to establish local rent control policies. Do you support a proposed Prop. 10, and why, or why not?
So, I think the real issue with Prop. 10 is what Sacramento is going to do. Sacramento is not going to take their hands off the steering wheel of what’s going on with that. So, if Prop. 10 passes, Sacramento is going to pass some other rules and regulations that are put in place. If Prop. 10 passes and Sacramento doesn’t do something like that, then I think we need to go out and we need to go talk to the residents in the city of Sunnyvale and find out what the residents want. This is one of the things, the council gets to go ahead and make decisions and has some final votes on things. But the decisions of what we do should not be just based on what seven people think. You need to be able to go out and talk to the residents in the city of Sunnyvale, get input on about what they want, and not just what seven people who sit up here want to go ahead and do.
Mr. Grossman?
So, you know, I think first and foremost, I believe in local control. That’s why I support this initiative. I think it’s important to let cities decide, as the mayor has mentioned, anything that was done with rent control is going to be a ballot initiative. But I’d also say it’s important to be consistent about local control. So, for example, the city council voted against a League of Cities motion to fight SB 35, which would have, the VAALCO project is a function of SB 35. We should have voted in support of preventing things like that. So, I believe in local control all the way, and this is something that should go to a vote of the people.
Thank you. So, starting with Mr. Grossman this time. What budget challenges do you see the council needing to address over the next three years?
Well, I’m not sure if it’ll be over the next three years, but eventually, we’re going to have to deal with pension reform. And one thing I don’t want to see is us trying to solve that problem on the backs of working people. I think that’s a mistake, particularly our city employees. So, what I want to have is see our business tax change. So, you may or may not know that folks like Google and LinkedIn and Apple are paying about $12,000 a year in a business tax. That’s simply too low for trillion-dollar companies that are literally the largest companies in the history of humanity. We need to have them pay their fair share. So, I want to work to pass legislation that’s going to have them pay their fair share for things like transportation and for some of our budget issues.
Thank you. Mr. Hendrix?
So, because of the 20-year budget model that the city of Sunnyvale does, we have a very good understanding of what our budget, our expenses and revenues look like out over the next 20 years. The number-one thing that’s going to affect our budget is pension costs. Pension costs are increasing by what’s happening within CalPERS. We understand and know that our pension costs peak in the year 2030, 2032. And we have good plans in place to go ahead and get us to that, so we can go ahead and make and keep the commitments that have been made to our employees here in the city of Sunnyvale. I want to thank prior councils, and especially the bargaining units, where we’ve already gone ahead and created multi-tier programs. So, new hires that come into the city come into a different tier, so we’re not having to do that battle right now. And I really want to thank the people that did that work before. The other piece that we just have to go ahead and understand is we are a service organization, and it’s the people in this, the employees in the city of Sunnyvale that provide those services, and they are going to have growing salaries for what goes forward. So, those are the two pieces in our budget.
Thank you. Did I call on you?
I think it’s me, but I’m not keeping absolute track, so I’m going to leave it to you.
No, you went first that time, so I’m next.
You’re next for the next question. Or you haven’t answered this question.
No, I have. We talked about.
Yeah, he did it, and then I did it.
Then you did.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much for the help. So, now, it’s your turn, Mr. Hendrix, to answer this question. Proposals have been made to change Sunnyvale’s election system to district elections, in which residents in geographical areas would choose their representatives. Do you support or oppose this proposal?
So, it’s not a proposal, as was mentioned before. This is, we’ve got a letter from a lawyer as it relates to the California Voting Rights Act, and so this is something that we have to go ahead and deal with. What I support is exactly what the council did, which was to take, even before we got a letter, to take a proactive approach to go ahead and say, we need to go ahead and reach out to our residents and find out what they want to do on this. It is a charter amendment that would need to be made, contrary to some people’s opinion. The city council cannot just change this. This is a huge governance model change that would take place. Just real quickly, right now, everybody in the city of Sunnyvale gets a chance to vote for each one of the members who’s on the city council, all seven of us, over four years. If we moved to district elections over a four-year period, you would only be allowed to vote for one person. That is a huge governance model change, and we need to reach out and talk to the voters and see what they want, and decide what is the ballot measure that goes that they’re going to vote about. And so, that’s what we’re doing. We’re doing outreach to the residents.
Thank you.
So, first off, I have to correct the mayor. It’s not the case that we can’t change to district voting. We can. Legislature has passed specific laws with respect to that, and as well, those have been supported by court cases. So, but what we need to do is, there’s not sort of a false dichotomy between district elections and some other form of elections. As the letter stated that we received from this law firm, we may be able to move to something like rank voting, which is what they were able to negotiate with Mission of Yeoh. But the part that’s really important, and I mean this sincerely, we have 45 days. This is not something we can put off. We need to act. Whether you like district elections, or at-large elections, or rank voting, it doesn’t really matter. We have to come to an agreement with this group within a short period of time, or we’re going to be exposed to large litigation, both our legal fees and the legal fees and interest of the folks that are suing us. So, this is not something we can play around with, and it’s not a political issue. It’s a common-sense issue.
Thank you, Mr. Grossman. We’ll start with you on this question. Sunnyvale currently has a housing mitigation fee that charges commercial development and impact fee that goes into an affordable housing program. MTC, the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, is exploring a regionally assessed commercial development fee for affordable housing. Do you agree or disagree with this kind of regional fee?
As I suggested earlier, I’m really a strong proponent of local control. As council member Larson mentioned, I would prefer to raise our own fee from the 12.5% that we have now to something more like 20%. I think that’s more effective. And I actually concur that we may have problems with other municipalities in terms of the distribution of those fees, so I’d prefer something that is assessed and stays in Sunnyvale.
Mr. Hendrix?
So, you’re probably going to hear some commonality here. Local control is the answer. I really don’t want to hear MTC telling us what to do, especially because the city of Sunnyvale has been the leader in this area. The city of Sunnyvale has had housing mitigation fees for multiple decades. There was just a big article last year that San Jose was thinking of doing it, and everybody was all excited. I was looking for the part of the article that talked about where the city of Sunnyvale has had it for decades. So, that’s really what’s the important part, is we need to go ahead and have this. If they want to go ahead and put that kind of control or pressure on other cities that don’t have housing mitigation fees and so that they can get going, that’s fine. But I don’t want to see something coming from the MTC that is putting pressure just on the city of Sunnyvale that’s been a leader in this area, especially we’re going to have some issues at the MTC. The three big cities, San Francisco, Oakland, and San Jose, tend to dominate things that come out of MTC, and will put the city of Sunnyvale and other smaller cities at a disadvantage. So, I like what we’re doing. We’re ahead of the game on this.
Thank you. So, we’ll start with you. Besides the 101-237 Matilda interchange project currently underway, what other road improvements or transportation projects do you envision to bring traffic relief to North Sunnyvale in light of anticipated additional development?
So, I would start with what the voters of the county voted for, which is Measure B, that’s going to provide grade separations for Caltrain at Mary and Sunnyvale, that’s going to allow for grade separations at Lawrence Expressway in Sunnyvale, that’s going to go ahead and will provide highway interchange improvements at multiple places throughout Sunnyvale. We’ve got the Perry Park Shuttle that’s going to be implemented for what goes on. There are other improvements that are happening to VTA to give our public transit work that’s going on. And we continue to go ahead and do work. We’ve installed smart streetlight technology on Matilda, which has reduced the travel time by about 42% from El Camino to 101. And we need to go ahead and look at installing that same type of technology on El Camino itself. We just have to get the state to go ahead and allow us to go ahead and do that. So, there are multiple things that we can do to be working at improving the efficiency of the existing roadway and improving safety for pedestrians and bicycle holders.
Thank you. Mr. Grossman?
I think one of the first things we need to do is look at the construction that we’ve got on the table. So, Google’s bought about $840 million worth of property. And if we continue our track of creating office buildings without housing to support it, our traffic situation is going to get worse and worse and worse, and no matter what sort of solutions we try to deploy, that’s not going to have an appreciable impact. Looking at ways we can try to make things better, one, I think Mountain View has got a great plan where they’re working with Google. We see all the private buses that make it difficult for our own folks to get on the bus. They have a shuttle service that works in their city. That’s something that we could do here, and I suggest that we do. And then, secondly, smart traffic. Our current approach is fragmented and bifurcated, and as you can see recently, the lights are not working well. I do this in a day job. We need to work and have a comprehensive plan for smart city technology that we can then deploy in the city.
Thank you. I’m going to start with you, Mr. Grossman. Would you share what significant contributions, if any, to your 2018 city council campaign came from PACs? If so, what PACs?
Zero. And as a matter of fact, I got a check today that I’m going to have to return, and this is the second time. I don’t deposit them. I have to explain to them that I’m not taking any money except from individuals. And I want to be clear on this. I think, you know, politics is basically a moral endeavor, because you’re dealing with kind of what’s the best interests of the people that live here. And that’s why I believe if you take a donation from a PAC or a special interest or a developer, and then you approve their project, I think that’s improper. Now, I’m not impugning the integrity or the honesty of the people that do that. It’s simply a disagreement about the best way to do things moving forward. And so, that’s why I only take individual contributions. And I’d say to all the other candidates, you can do it. I’ve done it, and I’m going to be doing it again today. And it’s a little bit painful, but I think it’s an important laboratory for our democracy, and that’s part of the reason I’m running this campaign.
Thank you. Mr. Hendrix?
So, yes, I have received campaign contributions. I don’t have my FPCC report here with me, so it’s Sun PAC, various different unions groups, Silvar. But I don’t think a single check has been larger than $2,500. I am the largest contributor to my campaign. I have over $30,000 that I put into this for what goes on. Why do we get campaign contributions? I think that’s the question to go ahead and look at. I walk a lot of precincts. You have to pay able to pay for mailers, flyers, postage. We moved from odd-year to even-year elections, which doubled the number of voters in the city of Sunnyvale. It takes money to go ahead and get your message out to these people. I am not beholden to anybody who has given me a campaign contribution, and I fail to see the difference between a developer and what is, or an individual. If the individual gives you money, they’re going to come up and potentially, the way he describes it, they’re going to ask you to go ahead and do things and vote their way as well. The answer is you have to be able to step and look at somebody and say, here, I’m doing what’s right for the city of Sunnyvale.
Okay. Thank you.
Ma’am?
Oh, okay. We have a rebuttal.
Yeah, this is my second.
That’s your second one. That’s your last one.
Thank you, though.
He used card one and card two.
So, I just say, I think there is a qualitative difference between, for example, a mobile home park resident that gives me $40 or $50, and then is concerned about mobile home park rent stabilization, and an independent expenditure, which I know is not a direct contribution of $70,000 from the National Association of Realtors. Those are two qualitatively very different things. And most importantly, this corrodes our democracy because people lose their faith in the system. And that’s why it’s so important we move forward with campaign finance reform.
And another rebuttal, and this is your last one.
So, I think it’s important to understand that, independent of what money you get, when you sit in this office as a council member or as the mayor, you have to be open and you have to listen to everybody that comes and wants to talk to you. You don’t look and say, here, who contributed, who did not contribute. You go ahead and you meet with everybody that’s here, you listen to what they have to say, and you’re open and available to them. That doesn’t mean you’re going to do exactly what they want, but you have to be open to hear their ideas. And I’ll tell you, there are more people that come and talk to me as the mayor and councilman that never contributed to my campaign than people who contributed.
Thank you. And now, I need your help. I believe it’s Mr. Hendrix’s turn to go first this time. Is that right?
Sure.
I can’t keep track of laps when I swim, so this is a particular challenge.
That’s fine. Somebody out there knows, but sure, go ahead.
Okay. I’m going to ask Mr. Hendrix. Sunnyvale, and this time, I’m going to keep initials on these. Sunnyvale led the effort to create Silicon Valley Clean Energy, which now provides 100% greenhouse gassy electricity to our community and other cities nearby. What additional changes are needed to significantly reduce our community’s carbon pollution and make the city more resilient to climate change?
So, Silicon Valley Clean Energy is awesome. It is a fantastic thing we were able to go ahead and get implemented. What else we need to do? We had our CAP Climate Action Plan. We’re working on CAP 2.0 to go ahead and collect more ideas from our residents. And I think one of the biggest things we have to focus on is electrifying the fleet. We have to get our transportation vehicles converted to using electricity for what goes on. But I will say this, all the rest of the changes that are going to go on as it relates to being able to reduce greenhouse gases are going to be big behavioral changes. They are going to require changes by our residents. And so, we’re going to have to do a much better job of communicating out to our residents the need of what has to happen, the reason why we’re going to make certain decisions that we go ahead and make, to get them to be able to buy into and accept, and then want to be able to make what is going to be very, I think, very significant changes to be able to go ahead and really reduce, make the next changes we need to do for greenhouse gas reduction.
Mr. Grossman?
To quote another, I think basically we need to electrify everything, and we need to clean up the grid. We need to have no more natural gas in new construction. That’s a huge and easy thing that we can fix, and we need to do it immediately. We need to require solar power for commercial projects, which we’re currently not doing. And most importantly, and I think this is something that, again, is not being addressed, we need to stop building on land that due to global warming is going to be underwater. So, this Google project is something that’s very important. We really need to look at it, and that’s another environmental issue that I think is important. So, with those four things, I think we’ll be making a huge step forward, and it would be quite easy to require no more natural gas in new construction, as well as requiring solar for commercial construction.
Thank you. And now, we’re going to start with Mr. Grossman. Please specifically explain the levels of new office and new housing development that you support and where. Also, address how exactly you will provide the necessary infrastructure improvements to support such continued growth, public safety, fire, and traffic.
Well, I think first off, it’s important that whatever we’re building that’s new needs to be built near existing transportation hubs. But quite frankly, the infrastructure that we have in place is not something that’s going to support a lot of new buildings. And we’ve already got a huge number of buildings that are coming through the pipeline. So, I think we need to take a step back and see what’s happening. I’m not suggesting we have a moratorium, but as you know, in the history of Sunnyvale, there was a six-month moratorium on building while we kind of decided what we should do moving forward. I’m not suggesting we do that. But instead of just building office space again and again, we need to really look at that, and we also need to make sure that we at least have a one-for-one. So, for every piece of office space that we’re building, every unit, we also need to be building housing. So, that would be my plan moving forward.
Mr. Hendrix?
So, the first thing I’ll say is, he mentioned housing. According to the grand jury report that came out this year, Sunnyvale’s jobs-to-housing ratio is 1.07 to 1. So, we’ve already got a very solid piece there. Where we’re looking at doing additional development is out in Moffett Park and along El Camino. Those of you who may not know, we’re looking at redoing the El Camino Precise Plan. El Camino is going to get rezoned as ground-floor retail with housing above, and we need to go ahead and look at that. Anytime we take a look at zoning of what we’re doing, we go out and we have a general plan process, where we go and we look at the environmental impact report, we look at the infrastructure changes that need to go ahead and may be required for that. So, those are all built into the process of what we go ahead and do. So, that’s how we’re going to go ahead and look at it.
Thank you. Since you have both been very concise, we have time for one more question before we get to the final question. This is not going to be the final question. So, and we’ll start with Mr. Hendrix. The impact of SJC, and I think that’s the airport, South Flow, in the last two years due to the FAA’s next-gen implementation that has made airplane noise difficult for particular sections of Sunnyvale. Do you believe it is an issue? If so, what specific measures will you and can you take to address the noise?
So, yes, it is an issue. We’ve heard from the residents about this. I also live underneath where South Flow flies. I have been working on this for two and a half years. We reached out to the FAA after this started with the change. I was on the ad hoc committee that was put together for a six-month ad hoc committee. I was the chairperson of it. We produced a report of a series of recommendations to the FAA. Unfortunately, the way that committee was put together, it no longer exists. But as the chairperson of that, I continue to reach out to the FAA to find out when they’re going to provide answers to that. There are a couple of recommendations in there that would go ahead and improve the situation for what goes on. The real problem that drives why that traffic flies the way it is, is San Francisco owns so much of the airspace so far south, and when they’re flying South Flow, the South Flow traffic has to stay underneath it. That’s one of the reasons why it’s so low. But I do believe it’s a problem, and we are working on it, and the city of Sunnyvale has joined the next set of committees that’s being put together for that.
Thank you. Mr. Grossman?
So, I’ve worked really closely with the Save My Sunny Sky group, and many in that group support me. I’ve got a detailed plan. First off, we need to have a citizens’ commission to help deal with airplane noise, because quite frankly, these people have forgotten many than, more than many people know about airplane noise. It’s a very complex issue, and we should be drawing on the public’s help. Secondly, we need to take a different approach with the FAA. The jurisdictions that have been successful in this, like those in Orange County and Arizona, did it through taking a more aggressive approach with the FAA. If they believe we’re just going to roll over, we’re not going to be making progress. And thirdly, the plan we have now just simply misunderstands the issue. So, we've got noise monitors that are going to be deployed, but if you actually understand what, how the FAA looks at this, there's virtually no way to go above the noise level that's required by the FAA. So, we're spending a lot of money on a solution that's not going to work, that would be much better spent on something like a consultant that we could move forward with, to have a plan to aggressively work to solve this problem.
Thank you. And now, we do come to the final question, and we will start with Mr. Hendricks because you were second when we started with the first question. So, please state and answer a question you wish you had been asked.
I think the question that people should ask would be, what is our motivation and why do we want to be on the city council? I want to be on the city council because I was born and raised in the city. When I came, after I was in the military, I moved back here.